Yes, it is.
It's dressy but comfortable.
Good afternoon and welcome to the January 22nd, 2024 Board of Education Work Session. The meeting is now called to order. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move the agenda of Monday, January 22nd, 2024 Board of Education Work Session be approved as set forth, and each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Burchardine.
Aye.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
President Garlock.
Aye. This afternoon, we engage in a discussion with our Chief Academic Officer, Corinne Terrellson, Executive Director of Innovation, Adam Zimmerman, and others. I will now hand the meeting over to Corinne and her team. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Afternoon, I guess we're in. Thank you for taking the time today. I know this is a little earlier than normal. We're excited to be here in front of you. We were here a couple of months ago when we were on the onset of our work, and today we'll provide an update on our plan to ensure all students in Cedar Rapids are college and career-ready. We'll be communicating the why, what, how, when, and who of our plans to hit our goal of increasing graduation rates by 10 percentage points, and ensuring that every graduate graduates with something more than just a diploma, whether that be college credit and/or industry-recognized certification. So with that, we do have a special guest categorized as "as others," but he's more than "as others" for us, Dr. Steele. I'll let Jay introduce himself. He has been a great help as we've embarked on this process. He has great experience he'll tell you a little bit about, but I did want to publicly thank him for all the work and support as we've moved through this process.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's my honor to be here with you. My name is Jay Steele. And, sorry, sorry. I told Adam it's been a while since I've been in front of a board. My name is Dr. Jay Steele, and I am the President of the National Career Academy Coalition and also CEO of my own company, Steel Dynamics. And this is my 36th year in education. I was a former high school principal, middle school teacher, Chief Academic Officer for Metropolitan Nashville Public Schools, where I had 86,000 kids under my leadership and 150 schools, and then also in St. Augustine, Florida, the nation's oldest city. Came through that school district, based in Jacksonville, Florida. So I flew in this morning, got up at 3:00 AM, caught a 6:00 AM flight. It was a little cold in Florida. It was 32 degrees. That's cold for us. We get that twice a year. But I work all across the country with school districts and across the world with school districts that are transforming their schools into the College and Career Academy Model or College and Career Connected Learning. So I work mostly in the state of Hawaii. I know that sounds great. I was just there last week. It was 90 degrees and then flew here, but it's good to see a little bit of snow. But also work across Southeast Asia, Thailand, Guam, Philippines, Vietnam, state of Mississippi, Nebraska, and then working here with Cedar Rapids. So it's my honor to be with you today.
Excellent. So we'll start with our personal journeys. The work we're going to talk about today is talking about how we create systems to ensure all kids reach their passions, but we'll start with our own. So in front of you should have a timeline. I have lots of paper today, and I apologize, but a lot of work's been done. A timeline. I'll model my experience, and then I'll give you some time to reflect, and then we'll do some activity together. But start at whatever age that you feel appropriate. For me, I knew when I was a kid, I wanted to be an attorney, a judge, actually, from when I was five or six. That was my thing, all through high school. What do you want to be, an attorney, a judge? I went to college. I did internships. I interned for, as an investigator for the public defender in Washington, DC. I said, "This is my path." I said, "I might want to be on the policy side." So I went and I got another internship with the NAACP in DC. This was a passion of mine that I was, at that time, I was dead-set on doing. Finished my degree, went over to get my master's in public policy, and realized at that point, which was a critical juncture, that I didn't really know what I was talking about in terms of any of the policies that I was reading about. So I got the opportunity to go be a seventh and eighth grade ELA teacher in Washington, DC. At that point, it was pivotal and formative for me because I saw a whole different side of the power of school. And school was really, really important, and I saw it transformed kids' lives, but a whole school, and ultimately, a community. And so in terms of my formative experiences, that was critical. And so beyond that, I went and got my admin degree, which was that formal credential, came back to Cedar Rapids in Eastern Iowa, where I'm from, and started to do the work here in Cedar Rapids as the Director of CCT or Climate and Culture, Executive Director of Middle Schools, and finally, I get the privilege of serving as the Executive Director of Innovation. That has put me on a whole new track of going to pursue my superintendency as well, and I'm still doing school. That's my journey in education and through the internships I've had and the formative experiences I've had. And if you would have asked me when I was an 11th grader, different Adam, what I would be, it wouldn't be what I am now, but all of those experiences I've had have culminated and given me a set of skills that were really transferable and I'm grateful for. Those are the experiences we want our kids to have as well, or different, whatever their passion area is. So take a few minutes. Try to write out your timeline. What were the, what did you aspire to be when you were a kid? And then what were those formative experiences as you went that helped shape your path or change it? And we'll take five minutes here so you can complete your timeline, and then we'll talk. I think people are wrapping up. When you're ready, just turn to the partner next to and tell them your story.
Okay.
I will bring you back.
And especially we merged three offices together, opportunity at Iowa, special support.
When you're ready, I will bring you back. I was going to do a time check. I was going to do a time check, of course. Has everyone gotten to share?
No.
No. Okay, we'll do two more minutes. Continue with yours. Thanks. Clearly. All right. I'll try once again. If you're ready, I'll bring you back. So, good conversation. It sounded great. Share. The guiding questions are on the board behind you. What'd you hear? What did people want to be when they grow up? What were those formative experiences and what skills transferred or didn't? Or if you had a different conversation, let's hear about that.
We aren't what we thought we were going to be.
You won.
My partner in.
And so experiences, what were the formative experiences that maybe confirmed the passion that you felt early on?
I mean, so I'll just be honest and say that like when I was a little kid, I wanted to be like a train conductor. It's not a practical profession, apparently. And then there was somebody in my family that was a lawyer, so I wanted to go in to be an attorney mediator. But again, that just didn't seem like something that I enjoyed. And then I'll be honest with you, when I was in college, I think the focus stopped being on what do you want to be when you grow up? Just like, what do you want to learn? So I often tell people, I wasn't, I was in my mid-30s before any of this stuff started to make sense. So, but I don't know if any of us like set out from a really early age to be school board members and like, you know, like volunteers in our community, right? It doesn't seem like, but it clearly makes sense. If you go back to your younger self, I do think a lot of people would probably say like, "Yeah, I think you're on the right path." So.
Thank you. Others?
I was gonna say, I feel like the earlier the better when it comes to exploration of careers. I loved animals, so I thought I wanted to be a vet. Then I did that for a day, and it was awful. So I had to give them shots or watch them get, you know, that doesn't translate, right? Or, you know, I then take that test, something, there was some questionnaire and they told me to be a traffic control person. I don't know what that threw me for a loop. My, I had these different formative experiences with a specific person in a career or a space that then led me to believe I wanted to or didn't want to do that thing. So I feel like there's a lot of different people and experiences that kind of put you on those paths or steer you in a new direction. So yeah, but the, how many careers? I think I'm still going, so we'll see.
Thank you. Others? I apologize.
Okay. So from an early age, I always wanted to be an attorney. I see a theme here. And actually, grew up working in a family business, so had a lot of business background, which influences kind of what I do now. Went to DePaul, was, worked for a nonprofit that was actually, at the time, it was the American Loan Association of Metropolitan Chicago, and they developed the nationwide, I worked on nationwide policy to stop target marketing of alcohol and tobacco. Came kind of a framework. So that was cool, right? So all this is leading towards law stuff, right? Was a double major because I wanted to represent children who are the most underrepresented population by law. And then I got in a car accident, and everything changed because the aptitude just wasn't there anymore. So that came to a very quick halt. I was a junior, took three more years to graduate college. So that was hard. But then, just kind of from then, went back and worked business, did some freelance writing. Now I use my business experience and I think a lot of the reasoned discourse, law classes, I'm looking at the attorney, to be successful in nonprofit development. It's a lot of grant writing and technicality and all that.
Thank you for sharing.
So she really ended up doing attorney work anyway, right?
Without the paycheck.
Mine is really, I see a consistent pattern. I wanted to be.
Okay, I see a consistent pattern with mine. Thank you. I wanted to be, at 12 years old, I knew I wanted to be a journalist, a newscaster. I wanted to bring you your evening news. I used to stand in the mirror and practice. Good evening, I am Mercy Boy. Coming to you from Channel, da-da-da-da-da. Breaking news. I had a downpack, right? Because I love people. I love their stories. I love the, just how people, the cultures, the difference between how people live their lives. Then I wanted to be, I wanted to be a doctor or a nurse. When I was like 13, 15, it says, again, loving people, taking care of people. I'm a great nurturer. I want to see people do well and thrive and be amazing, and just more of medical. And then I was really, I became really, really interested in community advocacy, gathering people, hearing voices, hearing what matters to people, helping people come out of their dead zones and be the very best they can be, and motivating them and all of that stuff. And I think it just kind of brings me to where I am now. I really have not changed that much. I'm not bringing you your evening news except for YouTube board meetings, but. So that is, that's my stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think that the pieces are what we want to create in our system, right? Is that there may be kids in our system right now sitting in seats that know exactly where they want to go, and we should give them the experiences to get there. There may be kids that have no idea or think they know where they're going to go, and it'll go a whole different direction. But we should be able to say with confidence that the skills we give them are the right skills that they can transfer across disciplines and career tracks because life does happen. And we need to have a set of skills, a backpack full of skills, to cope and to move on to the next thing. So that's what we're going to talk about today, is how we're going to create that system and the design that we have to do that. So with that, we're going to talk about where we've been. And, sorry? Thank you, Justin. We'll start with a quote. Can someone put voice to the quote that you have now heard a couple of times, but it's a theme, so we'll keep coming back to it? Can someone put voice to that?
Every system is perfectly designed to get the result that it does.
That's right. And so that quote is something that resonates with us. In 2017, we started the work that we're about to talk to today, and we have a really good foundation from which we can start. Saat came together, community members came together, said, "What are the skills that we want to get every learner to?" And that work was great, and laid a great foundation for us to move forward. We did have some system issues that we can identify clearly of why we didn't hit that mark yet. Curriculum, we didn't align curriculum to it. We didn't say, "These are the experiences that every kid will have." We didn't plug our community members in in a way that was meaningfully going to get kids the experiences they need in our community. And we didn't have the structures or measurement systems to track where kids were relative to the goal. So the foundation of the ideas is there. We're now ready to take the next step and really start to go to the next level around how to make the system real and outline our profile of graduate. Today, you guys are going to see a next draft. We've been working hard over the last three months now to get stakeholders together. You're going to see that. We want you to weigh in on that as well. You'll also see the guaranteed experiences that we want every kid by grade level to have, that we want to track and make sure they get. Those are just the first pieces that we're going to start with as the North Star, as we move in to creating the structures and systems to do that. So with that, where are we? And we'll get back into the data. And we have two data sets that we're going to examine together today. The first is the achievement data, which you've seen, it's our scorecard data, and we'll hone into goal number four, all around college and career readiness. We'll look at that. We're going to start, I should say, before we get going. The second is perception around college and career readiness. We have a SWOT analysis that we've done. Dr. Steele's organization conducted it for us. We had almost 500 participants in it to say, "What are the current systems in Cedar Rapids? How are they working for you in terms of college and career readiness? And how can they be improved?" So we'll get stakeholder voice at the table today as well. Let's start with the achievement data, though. So, sorry for all the paper. In your folder, you have two data sheets. One, this is data review, and one is the scorecard that should look from here. I think it's in the left-hand side of it. Yep. So take a couple of minutes. What you have with the data review sheet, which is the typed-up notes? These were the notes from your retreat a couple of months ago as headlines that you created around the scorecard. So take a minute, review those, and then review the data sheet, this actual scorecard data, honing in on the college and career readiness. See what comes to the surface. What do you notice on a second pass at this, or maybe a third pass? And when you're ready, talk to the same partner that you did previously. When you're ready, go ahead and turn to your partner and start conversation. What'd you notice? Take about one more minute, and I'll bring Take about one more minute and I'll bring you back together.
All right. I'll bring you back together and we'll have the, we'll finish the conversation as a group.
On a second or third pass, what'd you notice?
So I noticed, this is the first time I've noticed it, but there seems are, the spread between our subgroups is larger than the spread between the state average. So our subgroups are more, so the difference, except for CTE, which is actually less. But so the difference between, let's take like graduating college and career-ready students for the five-year, that's 77 for Black African-American and 88 for white. So that difference is 17. But the difference in the state is nine. So there's a larger spread between our subgroups than there is between the state average. Does that make sense?
There's disparity within the system.
Right.
Thank you, others.
I did look at ACT and SAT success. And for our students, the percent of students who have an ACT of 22 or higher. And it's troubling when you see that we only had 369 of the African-American students, only 4%. And our ELL is zero. And that just lets me know that there is work that needs to be done. I did look at that. And then when I looked down at the career and technical education, even when I compare it to the state, that we still fall below. So it's good that we're doing this to see where we're at and where we need to go right now.
A couple of things that we noticed, back to the ACT and SAT success. If you, if you look at the success compared to ACT or SAT participation, our participation seems to be high. But our success is low. So I guess I would question, what's, like, are we pushing the test for the sake of taking the test? Or do we really want the kids to do well? Because there's quite a disparity there. The other thing that I noticed, the bottom two rows, college-level post-secondary advanced coursework. We are well below the state average. And career and technical ed, we are well below the state average. So where are our kids? Like, what are, what are they taking? If we're not with the state average on either of those two categories, like, what are they doing?
Thank you.
I guess Cindy, I'd ask, because we noticed that too. And some of it is the availability of the programming. I mean, we don't have a lot for CTE right now, so our, maybe we're lower than the state for that matter. And to me, that's a really important marker for us as well. Are we offering what kids need?
One of the things that I noticed here, and as I keep coming back to it, and I think we've highlighted several different occasions, these metrics are for all kids, right? So often we say, oh, this college and career readiness, that's a CTE thing, right? So let's just go talk about CTE. When we're talking about course offerings, we're talking about all course offerings and how we're systematically developing programs to go meet the needs of our kids and give them pathways to their future. So this has to and has become something that's been all-encompassing. When we talk about course programming, you guys are going to see a new course program next year that we'll need approval for. But we're redesigning it is it's coming from this data of how we best prepare kids. Let's transition unless there's any other notes on the academic achievement data. Let's transition to the perception data around college and career readiness. And I'll hand it to Jay to walk us through his report.
If you'll pull out this folder, this packet inside your folder. So we conducted a SWOT analysis and we did two different methods here. We did focus groups with students in all five high schools. And the schools selected groups of students. Some pulled them out of the hallway, some were more intentional about who they chose. And we had some that actually took the surveys and went into classrooms, some teachers who did that. And so you'll see, and then we also did surveys, online surveys with K-8 students, teachers, high school teachers, administrators, parents. And you'll see on page, on the inside cover, you'll see the survey questions that were asked of everyone. And then, but I want to draw your attention to, they're not, oh yeah, page four, if you'll look at page four. There were 524 total respondents to the surveys, but only 443 completed the survey. So we only used the 443 that completed the surveys, so it wasn't skewed. Okay, and you'll see there was 155 parents, 177 students, 43 high school teachers, counselors, and 54 K-8 teachers and guidance counselors. It was by choice if they chose to do the survey or not. We could not force people to do that. All right, and we know people are over-surveyed in this day and age. If you look on the right-hand side, which is page five, the key takeaways, I'm just going to walk through briefly and just point out some of the highlights. Overall, college and career-connected learning is getting a big thumbs up from everyone who responded. All constituents reported that they would welcome career-connected educational platforms for students in high school, and they understand the benefits of doing so. The only group not supportive was high school teachers and guidance counselors. So if you look at the strengths, so this is a typical SWOT analysis. The top reported strengths of the high schools were dual enrollment, like your early college programs, and the quality of teachers and staff, which is a very positive thing. Course options available and the opportunity for students to take AP classes also ranked highly. But again, it goes to the point of equity and access there. College and career preparation also make the top of the list. The weaknesses, where people wanted more career-connected opportunities for students and better communication. Those were the top two. Better communication was centered around the perception that parents and students don't, do not have a clear understanding of what opportunities are available to them, especially more information around dual enrollment. Opportunities were centered around providing more options in the trades. We'll go a little bit deeper into that because that has a different meaning for different groups, as well as more career-connected learning. There were a large portion of respondents that would like to see high schools add a course where students could learn real-life skills like personal finance and filing taxes, things like that. All right, the threats, this was very interesting. Social media is, has a negative impact on our schools and our students. Discipline in students disrupting class and disrespecting staff are also perceived as threats. And then possible pathways. Healthcare was the number one pretty much across all constituents. I think that's, we see that in all the communities I work in. Healthcare is pretty much at the very top of opportunities. However, we add the construct, it was followed by trade. But when you add trades to construction, because it was broken out, then that actually went above healthcare. Okay? And so if you flip the page, you'll see on page six, the combined SWOT analysis from the 443. You'll see the strengths on the left-hand side in the order that they were perceived. Dual enrollment was as the highest strength. Our teachers and staff are right below that, one point below. Our course options, AP, college and career, college prep, et cetera. The weaknesses, you'll see in the second column, more career-connected was by far the highest weakness. People are wanting more career-connected learning and opportunities. And you'll see that again in the opportunity side, more trades, career-connected, real-life skills. Those were the top ones. Then the threats, social media, politics, discipline, and then I don't know. And then if you look at the charts right below it, familiarity and perception. In general, how familiar are you with the term college and career-connected learning? So familiar, which is good, 50%, and then 42% have no idea. So that to me is an opportunity right there on how to educate and communicate those people, to that, those constituents, what is college and career-connected learning? Then the next chart, what does the term college and career-connected learning give you a perception of? 68% said college and career readiness. I'm very happy they said both, not one or the other. Because you'll notice right above that, 9% said only career readiness, and 13% said only college readiness. I think in this day and age, we all know that they have to go together. Because if you do them separately, you're going to get the same results that you might be seeing in your data. Okay? One of the things that I've shared with the team in working with them here is the term insufficient degree. And they might have shown you that video at some point. But what we've done in most schools in the past is when we ask, and we counsel with kids, we ask them what college they want to go to. It really should be flipped. What career do you see yourself going into? And then what post-secondary program aligns with that? So you're not wasting time, wasting money, and floundering on mom and dad's money in college or whatever your post-secondary degree is. So kind of flipping that notion. So I think there's a really, if you look on page seven, there, right in the middle where it says communication. I think there's a real opportunity. Do you think our district does a good job communicating the benefits of our high schools and any new information? 34% said not so good. 11% said yes. So I think there's an opportunity there on how we can communicate and market the products and the offerings to the parents and the students and the whole community. And then right above that, you'll see what pathways would you like to see? Health sciences was top, followed by trades. But if you go down where it says construction, I would lump that into trades and that's going to put it above. But what we have a perception of is when people say trades, they're thinking traditional trades like when we all went to school. I mean, we had shop, we had a wood shop, and we had a home ec lab. That's pretty much all we had. We're really looking at different things using the correct data on anything from artificial intelligence, virtual reality, to energy consumption, energy generation, to finance, to pre-law. There's just so many different things. So you see there, health sciences, trades, business entrepreneurship was high. Education, that's kind of rare to see that, that that got up there. Okay, because most, most kids don't want to be us when we go to different schools, so that was nice to see that. The next few pages just break it down by student, so you can look at what the students want. So if you look at page nine, you'll see students, kids, number one was health sciences. And you'll see that law and criminal justice was second, business third, engineering, psychology. The construction trades was further down. So it's the adults who were wanting the construction trades, really not the kids. Okay? And then if you flip on over, I mean, you could, you could spend probably an hour dissecting all of this. But if you look at page 10 and 11, that's where the parents were. Parents were, again, on page 11, the health sciences and education and business were the top, and IT was up there. But you'll notice if you don't go down, you see really no trades. Well, construction is somewhere right in the middle, the red line. But trades did not come up there. Okay, then you get over to the page 12 and 13, you'll see the teachers. High school teachers said health and trades were the top two. Okay? And I also want to point out on communication on page 13, our high school teachers and counselors said that, do you think our district does a good job of communicating the benefits of our high school? 48% said not so good. So again, another opportunity there. And then the final one is K-8 teachers and counselors, 43 of them. They put trades as the highest one. This is your, more of your K-8, your elementary, and a little bit of the secondary teachers putting trades. Again, this could be a lack of not knowing what's the new generation of career and technical education programs that are out there. So again, I see that as an opportunity to educate them on what are the offerings here in Cedar Rapids. One of the things that's not reported here in the focus groups, to one of your employees and DK Brand Strategy out of Columbus, Ohio, when they were doing the focus groups and they asked the kids at two schools if any of them planned to stay in Cedar Rapids, zero. All right, so that was a little shocking, but I see that as an opportunity to build something that's going to show kids that they can have a good quality of life, go to school, work here, raise their families here. They don't have to leave for opportunities.
Quick question about the trades. So was it defined before they took the test? Or was it just the definition that they had in their brain of trades? Or did you use AI, virtual reality as?
It was, the only thing that we did prep them on what career-connected learning meant, but we did not specifically tie it to a trade or job.
Other questions around the data or noticing things that popped out?
I think this is great data. I just, as, you know, as a board member, our job is to make sure that all stakeholder voices are at the table and the process is transparent. I think the process was transparent. I'm just wondering if we have feedback from all of the groups that we need to be representing and within our system. The survey was voluntary, which is great. But, but sometimes I am concerned that we're not hearing from the voices that we need to hear from. So, so that would just be something that I would like to surface.
Yeah, I would love further feedback. We're going to go over the groups that have been talked to. And we, this is an ongoing process, but we need more. So as we start to hone in, in the coming months, on what those pathways will look like and in which direction we're going, we'll just need to make sure we elevate those voices as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Other thoughts, noticings? Okay, so we talked about the achievement data. We talked about perception. Karine, you want to talk about where we're going?
Thanks, Adam. I want to bring you to the next slide, which is our blueprint for every future, every learner future-ready. Pillar one, elevating plans, pathways, and passions. And as we discussed two weeks ago, we have every reason to be confident about our blueprint for every learner future-ready. Our strategic plan, which our Office of Academics has helped create, may just be words on a page. But its true power lies in the implementation of research-based frameworks. Thanks to the powerful vision that you have cast, we are proud to present a solution that we believe will energize our staff to elevate students' plans, pathways, and passions. I want to elevate once again that what we are bringing to you is research-based and very, very powerful. On the next slide, the Office of Academics have focused on three specific areas. High-quality core instruction, making sure that our teachers are supported and doing our very best practices in the classrooms. Curriculum alignment, which is incredibly important to ensure that our students are learning the tasks and the things that we expect them to learn. And tonight, we're going to focus on our third area, which is college and career readiness. The five priorities that we've been working on this year in the Office of Academics are purpose and design, creating and designing career pathways for students, key skills and success indicators, defining the success indicators for our profile of a graduate, programming and support continuum, designing K-12 programming to prepare students to be ready to pursue their passion area, career pathways, defining high-skill, high-wage, high-demand career pathways that meet the demands of our community, and communication tools, creating marketing and branding materials for our pathways and programming. The Office of Academics has worked tirelessly with Jay the last six months or so. I am so proud of the work that our team has done, and I've learned so much from you, Jay. And I hope that we provide to you tonight the areas that will help make the decisions as we move forward. But I just want you to know that Adam and our team fully believe in this process and are so excited to present that to you today. And how great for you to join us, Jay, in this, in this journey. Thank you.
So I'm going to transition to Jay now. He's going to have two big sections. And Karine hit it on the nose. This is research-based. And we want you to get, we want you to see the research base, but then also to very clearly see what are the key design elements that we must but then also to very clearly see what are the key design elements that we must have in order to see those results in practice. So two big areas, the research base and then the key design elements, and then we'll launch into the work that we've already accomplished and the path we're on.
So I want to take you back to the quote from Deming at the beginning. Every system is perfectly designed to get the result that it does. This is actually was not planned, but that is my doctorate. It is in total quality management, which is Deming's work and continuous improvement, plan, do, check, act. So it's about looking at data, reacting to the data, making refinements on what those data are telling us. Your data has, is speaking a lot, okay, here, and you pointed out some of the things. I just wanted to point out a couple more things. ACT. In the states that I mostly work in, ACT is required for every 11th grader, and it is the hardest needle to move. Okay? And I struggled with moving that in my system in Nashville, but we were able to move it because we had 7,500 students taking the ACT every year with 140 different languages. And I shared with Adam and the team, after doing a lot of research on EL strategies, my EL kids were outperforming the students that were born here by the time they graduated. So I see a lot of opportunity. If you look at the 0% EL students scoring a 22 or higher on the ACT, okay, that starts all the way back to kindergarten. It cannot be a high school strategy. That is a K-12 strategy of intentional strategies for ACT prep, ACT intentionality is what I'd like to call it. You also mentioned that the number of students taking college courses. I think we also have to look at how we define college. In most educational institutions, we define it as a four-year university, and unfortunately, that's what our systems are usually set up to promote. So there's a lot of opportunity there to broaden our definition and the experiences that we provide, things like international baccalaureate, things like Cambridge Advanced International Certificate of Education, apprenticeship programs, two and four-year degree, and career and technical certifications. So I think you, with the design that is being prepared for you over these next few weeks, you're going to see that that's going to be front and center. All right. So I'll take you back to why college and career connected learning.
Chairman, just my facilitation note. As you're going through, you all have note cards in front of you. These are the directions. Answer these two questions or take notes. This is the conversation we'll have after. What are the key benefits? And if you have worries, what are the worries of career connected learning pathways and academies? And then how does it connect to the strategic plan? And so as you listen to Jay and his wisdom, please take those notes and we'll have the conversation afterwards.
No, that's okay. Perfect. So I will share this. When I was 31 years old, I was promoted to the career and technical education, which is Tara's position, Tara's somewhere here behind me. And the first day on the job, my superintendent came to me and said, Jay, I want to plan on my desk in two weeks to put in academies in every single high school. Yes, sir. Okay? I had to go find out what that meant. So I did a lot of research in, with the National Academy Foundation, with the College and Career Academy Support Network out of University of California, Berkeley, which is one of the premier research institutions for this type of work. And first person I contacted was our Chamber of Commerce out of Jacksonville, Florida, our regional chamber, and the St. Augustine Chamber. Because I had, as a teacher, I had no clue what those high-quality programs should be. I only knew what I knew. So I had to go to the business community. And our school district was, if you look up St. John's County, we were number two, number three, pretty much in every single tested area, and believe me, we test in everything in Florida. And our superintendent said, we have these wonderful high-level programs, we have a lot of dropout prevention programs, but the majority of our kids in the middle, we're missing something for them. There's no intentionality for them. So within five years of building these academies in these seven high schools, now there's nine high schools, they are the number one school district for the past 15 years in the state of Florida in every single tested area. So I know the model works. That caught the attention of national work in a lot of urban districts like Nashville that completely reformed their system. And so I went there as the chief academic officer. So I learned that there's, this model works with high-performing kids, kids of poverty, kids of, of all ability levels. And I used my own experience with my family. I have two nephews from the same mother and father. One graduated valedictorian of an international baccalaureate school in Louisville, Kentucky. That's where I grew up. And he majored in English. Brilliant kid, but he's a stand-up comic in LA. He's not funny, he's not making any money, he's living in poverty. Okay? The other one went through a career and technical culinary business program, went to a two-year degree, and is now running for Niemours Hospital in Louisville, Kentucky, the dietary nutrition program for their hospitals. Okay? So there's different paths to get where you want to go. It's always not what we experienced ourselves. All right? So there's a continent of, full of empirical evidence demonstrating the efficacy of a system that connects work and learning beginning in high school. I even think it's before high school. President Obama was actually featured in this work. He came to Nashville to see what we were building for our kids and delivered one of his speeches after the State of the Union there. An economy built to last demands that we keep doing everything we can to help students learn the skills that businesses are looking for. You want your kids to live here, work here, have a good quality of life, and not have to move away. And that's one of the things I take away from my work in Hawaii. I work on every island in Hawaii with 25 high schools, 13 elementary schools, and six middle schools. And they're aligning K-12 as system so their kids don't have to leave. Their kids feel that they have to leave and come to the mainland in order to make money, have a career, and live a good quality of life. So they completely redesigned their whole system to show kids, these are the opportunities for here aligned with our post-secondary schools and the careers here. And their business partners are like swarming to the schools to be part of it and to work with those kids. So you asked the question, you might ask the question, why college and career pathways and academies? So I want you to think of, I'm going to give you an analogy here, a university analogy. A university is broken down into colleges, a colleges of engineering, a college of business, healthcare, education. Inside each one of those colleges, there's a faculty, there's an advisor, there is a dean, and so what, and there's majors, multiple majors. So high schools across the country, this is not a new initiative, this started in 1969 in Philadelphia, and it has expanded worldwide at this point, throughout the United Kingdom and throughout Southeast Asia, all the way Guam, Hawaii, and pretty much almost every state in the, in the United States. So breaking down your high schools into smaller learning communities, I'm going to use that term, creating a family within the school. In Hawaii, we call it Ohana, but it truly is creating a family within the school where kids feel connected to an adult, they feel connected to their community, and they have a purpose for learning what they're learning. Okay? And they select some type of major. Those majors are built on high-skill, high-wage, in-demand industries for the Cedar Rapids community. Okay? They also align with college degrees, technical certificates, apprenticeship programs, and majors here within your university and college system. So they don't have to leave. They can leave if they choose to, but you're prepping them and giving them the skills to stay and have a good quality of life here. Students spend at least 50% of their day in this model, and they go outside to take those general electives like you normally would. It's just one course a day on top of the state requirements. And that course would be something like artificial intelligence, financial planning, engineering, whatever the data tell us. All right? So the research shows that MDRC, MDCR, I'm sorry, it is MDRC, there's a little typo there, did a landmark study in California, a longitudinal study that followed kids over a series of years that went through an academy. Students were more likely to complete the required credits for graduation, so in every instance, the school's graduation rate goes up. And academies doubled the rate at which high-risk students completed a core academic curriculum. You have data issues with your African-American, and I have a feeling if you dive even deeper, you're going to find the same thing into some of your more, your other ethnic subgroups. This research showed that students, male students, African-American, and Hispanic, it had the greatest benefit for them. Higher life-term, lifelong earnings and were apt to be more stable in a family with 1.5 children more than someone who didn't go through an academy structure, which was kind of different to find that. But very significant labor market gains, particularly for at-risk males. Significant sustained increase in earnings and overall months and hours of employment, particularly concentrated of young men who are in the highest subgroup. So one of the things that, from the very first academy, it was created in Philadelphia, and it was the high school principal, they took the toughest high school in Philadelphia, Edison High School, and they went to the middle school or the junior high principals and said, give us a list of your surefire dropouts. And it was 30 African-American boys. And this group of teachers who volunteered, an English mass, science, and social studies teacher, and an electrical teacher. And they went to the Philadelphia Electric Company, who became the partner, and they nurtured that group of kids for four years. The teachers designed curriculum and experiences that were active and project-based around electrical as the theme. Kids were taught professional skills, 100% graduation rate within four years. Okay? And that is research-based and that is fact. All right? So in California in 2008, there was a study funded by the Partnership Academies. So California adopted this model, they call it linked learning. It was originally called the California Partnership Academies. And so what they found is they were more likely to pass the California High School exit exam as sophomores compared to kids who were not in the program. They were more likely to complete entrance requirements needed for admission to the public universities and more likely to graduate from high school. All right? Another fact on the next one is looking at dropout prevention. Okay? The strategy effect size for this model, ask the kids, what would have been the biggest influence for you to stay in school? And it was more career development and job training, family engagement, mentoring, we were there. Look at the bottom one, academic support. So what we traditionally do in schools is when kids are falling behind is we double dose them. I found this in Nashville when I went there. The kids who were struggling in reading and math, we put them in two periods, 180 minutes of reading and math. Now they're getting two Fs or four Fs. Our graduation rate was at 58%. We did away with that immediately and started retraining our teachers on quality instruction from bell to bell. We're not going to double-dose kids, we're not going, we're going to do quality instruction using the time we have. Within five years, our graduation rate went from 58 on a five-year rate to 82 on a four-year rate. So I know the model works. Now, I haven't been in Nashville for six years, they're experiencing some difficulties now because that's out of my control. But, so I know that the model works and I've seen it work firsthand with kids. On the next slide, you'll notice the challenge. Total unemployment is projected to grow from 153.5 million to 165.4 million over the next decade. An increase of 11.9 million jobs. That's from the Bureau of Labor Statistics. Healthcare, there it is again. Healthcare and social systems are projected to add the most at 3.3 million jobs. So we can't go wrong with teaching different health cares, but it's more than just being a doctor or nurse. There's so many opportunities there. And basically, that's what kids know, a nurse or a doctor. Technological advancements are expected to support strong employment growth in professional, business, and scientific service industries, including computer systems, design-related services. You, you turn on the news any day, you're hearing about AI. Okay? What it's going to do to our lives in the next year, in the next five years, it's going to completely revolution and change everything. So school districts are starting to look at AI. Hawaii is offering AI. Right down the road, Omaha has built a smart high school that has virtual reality and AI as a pathway for their kids. And that, and Phoenix also doing the same thing. So really starting to pick up. So we are kind of recommending that that be built into the curriculum here also. Just understanding the use of technology. The next slide, 67% of US manufacturers are experiencing shortages of qualified workers. US companies can't fill open positions in the top three job categories. Okay? And those are skilled trade workers, engineers, and IT staff. Okay? So businesses understand. Businesses are actually reaching out to the National Career Academy Coalition, we're a national nonprofit, and they're saying, we hear what you're doing, we want to partner with you, and we want to go into high schools and start catching the kids early, helping the teachers train them. Discount Tire, Bridgestone Firestone, Health Corporations of America, these are all companies that are going and putting clinics in high schools, putting discount tires or Firestone retail centers in high school automotive programs, training the kids in those programs, certifying them, and then offering them full jobs or college degrees to go on in management and business. So they, the businesses are starting to see this model is working for their kids or for their future workforce. Again, it's not about tracking kids in a particular job. As Adam and Karine said earlier, it's transferable skills. What can we teach these kids that are, those professional skills that are going to make them successful in whatever they choose? Critical thinking, communication, collaboration, those are just three. There's, you could go on, but that's going to be key. The next slide, every year, over 1.2 million students drop out of high school in the United States alone. That's a student every 26 seconds or 7,000 a day. That is shocking. Okay? And the ninth grade year is key, that eighth and ninth grade year. There's been a lot of research out of Washington University on the dropout indicators for ninth graders. There are three of them. And the academy structure or the pathway structure can address that. The three are, if a student has chronic absenteeism, they hit 10 or more days, that's risk number one. If they have any in-school or out-of-school suspension, discipline issues, risk number two. And the third one is if they have a course failure, especially in core academic subjects, risk three. And if I hit all three, I'm pretty much a surefire dropout unless someone intervenes. So we're talking about building a structure that has a team of adults and community members wrapped around a family of kids that can monitor. So breaking down large high schools into smaller units where this group of adults can create and monitor those, create those family situations and monitor those data so they can intervene in a faster time. So about 25% of high school freshmen fail to graduate from high school on time. One of the other metrics I would probably want to add to your list is the retention rate for ninth graders. Okay? If you pull that, that's going to show you which kids are your highest at risk. Probably the same thing in the middle school. All right? The US, which has some of the highest graduation rates of any developed country, now ranks 22nd out of 27 developed countries. Okay? That is a sense of urgency to me. So the next slide, students who graduated from career academies, I'm going to say that career academies and/or pathways, because there's, there's kind of two different models that we're looking at. May, 81% of them said, if I would have had more real-world learning, it may have influenced me to stay in school. You always hear kids say, when am I going to use this? I said that as a kid, I'm sure some of you did. But if we can show them how they're going to use it, as an example, outside of Chicago, District 216, which is Hoffman's Estates right around O'Hare Airport, they are taking their geometry courses and their carpentry courses, and they're combining the two teachers. And so they are teaching, the geometry teacher will teach the theory, the framework, the standard, and the carpentry teacher will apply it. Their math rates shot through the roof. All right? So anytime you can apply something you're learning, then it answers that question. Okay? And so if you look at the next page, the key indicators, small learning community. Oh, I can't stress that enough. You've already got two schools in this model, and that is City View and Metro. Okay? So Metro, the dropout. Okay? Yeah. So I, that's a small school. To me, that is a family atmosphere. And if we really look at what they're doing, that is tremendous work. How can we replicate that in larger schools? Okay? How can we also take that to the next level and raise the expectation, raise the rigor and the opportunities for those kids? So a smaller learning community is key. College preparatory curriculum with a career theme. It can't be one or the other, it has to be both. So there has to be career education with college education, or you're going to end up like my two nephews. Okay? And then partnerships with employers, the community, and local colleges. We cannot do this alone as teachers or as educators. We need the expertise from our business and community members. We need the resources. We need their guidance on authentic, project-based learning, authentic opportunities such as internships, guest speakers, field trips, college visits, college courses. When we look at the number of kids taking college courses, I would ask the question, digging a little deeper into those data, what are the courses we're offering? I bet it's comp one, comp two, college alber, psychology, speech, maybe a few more. But if we start looking at it a little bit differently, can we offer anatomy and physiology, medical terminology? Can we offer blueprint reading? We're going to get a different group of kids starting to want to take these courses. All right? So if we can work with our colleges and universities to determine, what are some of those entry-level courses in healthcare, in IT, in construction that we could bring into the high school? That's going to into the high school? That's going to attract a different kid or additional kids to take where they didn't think they might be successful, they're going to be more successful. And then we can get them to take the comp one, the college algebra, those type things. So you will see that number probably double in the next five years with this model. All right? So this is a small, safe, supportive learning environment. It's contained within a larger high school setting. An academy has a career and college theme, preparing students for both post-secondary and career. It has three national components. It's a small learning community comprised of students that take classes together for at least two to four years. Okay? So think, remember, I used the university analogy with the colleges inside of it. Can a university student change their major? Absolutely. A high school could, student could. It's just as important to know what I want to do as what I don't want to do. Okay? Wouldn't it have been great if your high school had a broadcasting program and really taught, put you on television in the high school, and you were the face of the news for your high school? All right? That's happening across the country. Okay? It also is a college preparatory curriculum. We have to start raising the bar. One of the things that I've found here in your high schools is there's a culture of the senior year is the easiest. We let them go for half a day, and some of them go home, and they, they're not going anywhere to do anything. They're not taking college courses, or they're just, they're not going to do internships. They're just going home. To me, we need to flip that. The senior year should be the most challenging, rewarding, and it should not be the slackest of the years. Okay? You also have to have partnership with employers, the community, and the local colleges. That's going to be so key. We can't, again, we cannot do it alone. All right? We're also looking at high-skill, high-wage, and high-demand careers. So the department, the Federal Department of the Bureau of Labor prints out for every state and every region, every year. If you Google high-skill, high-wage targeted industries for Iowa, you'll find the list. It's always a year behind. It tells you every job in the Cedar Rapids or Iowa area, what they make, how many openings there are, and what the hourly wage is. Anything considered over $25 an hour is considered high-wage. So now we start have to look at what are the career and technical programs we offer? Do they meet the definition of high-skill, high-wage, high-demand? Some of them do not. So that will start changing the perception. If you start putting in the courses that align with that, such as finance, pre-law, engineering, healthcare, those different things, virtual reality, computer engineering, it's going to change the perception. So that's why the word trades sometimes has a negative connotation. Maybe let's look at it a little bit differently and forget what we experienced before creating something new. That's going to be key. All right? So the benefits are for this model is collaboration, teachers working together as a team. It is the original middle school model. I understand, Cindy, you were a teacher? What, did you, high school or middle school, elementary?
I did junior high in high school, back in the day when it was junior high and not middle school.
Yeah. So I started off in middle school in Florida. And the 16 characteristics of middle school, it's called this we believe, and it really is about creating and nurturing families. So in my middle school, we had two sixth-grade teams, two seventh-grade teams, two eighth-grade teams, and then one vertical sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade team to catch kids back up. And those teachers all worked together, English, math, science, social studies, as a team. They had a core group of kids. They had common planning every week, and it was about authentic learning. We're talking 1987, 88. That's when I started teaching. All right? And my middle school, we used Atlanta Olympics. When the Atlanta Olympics came to Atlanta, we said, we're going to, we didn't know what we were doing. We're going to create these projects. And we called it real-life scenarios built around the Olympics. And our kids did amazing work. We had the highest attendance, the highest, lowest discipline, and the highest achievement rate after one year than we ever did. Okay? We were worn out as a group of teachers, but it really taught us, that's how I learned really what the academy model is. It's teachers working together as a cohort. So if you take that same middle school concept and put it into the high school, it becomes a college and career academy. It's the same thing, but it now has a focus. So teachers have common planning weekly. They also have their individual planning, but you build an intentional schedule where they have common planning. They come together to focus on interdisciplinary projects, real, authentic learning that integrates English, math, science, and social studies with engineering or with healthcare, whatever the theme of that pathway or academy is. They also focus on social and emotional issues, building structures so kids aren't falling through the cracks. And we're looking, we're making sure that those dropout indicators I told you about are being addressed immediately, and we're being proactive instead of reactive. We're looking at content recovery before kids need course recovery, before they start failing. We're capturing them ahead of time. It's definitely college and career connections, and as I said, it's high-wage, high-skill, and in-demand. The model also builds a support system for kids. You've probably all heard of MTSS. Sometimes it's called RTI, Response to Intervention, or multi-tiered system of supports for kids. In, high schools struggle with that. Elementary's got it down. Middle schools usually are pretty good at it. High schools, we struggle with it because we don't have structures built in place where people can come together and have those teams, those meetings as a team. So this would solve that. This would, there would be an intentional structure of the first and third week of every single month, they're looking at the data from your data system, and they're having intentional conversations around the kids who are meeting two or three of those flags that we talked about. And so they start tracking the kids in the conversations and implementing strategies and monitoring it over time. But they're also looking at course failures. I always say the second and fourth meeting of the month, looking at kids every four and a half weeks who are failing, what can we do to address this? Okay? And again, building intentional supports. The family-type atmosphere, authentic learning is key. So nothing will be replaced quality instruction, having a great teacher in the classroom. But we do have to really invest in our teachers and build up their knowledge around active learning and project or problem-based learning, whatever you want to call it, whatever term works best for your community. But it really is about instructional empowerment and giving those teachers autonomy in their classrooms with some accountability, of course, to teach the standards in a different way through the lens of something the kids are passionate about. That's when really we start seeing graduation rates rise. We start seeing daily attendance rates rise. When kids are engaged in their learning, they're going to come to school more, they're going to behave more. When they're also involved in the community, it's someone else in front of them besides the teacher. I can stand up in front of my kids. I worked with a lot of kids last week in Hawaii, and I was there for just one day. At the end of the day, they write me an exit ticket and say, can you come be our teacher? If you're there every single day, sometimes you don't have the same influence as you have an outsider coming in. So having our community come in and team teach with us, co-design and deliver curriculum is key. And I'm seeing that across the country. ACT score starts to rise, and improved teacher efficacy, very, very important. All right? So the key design elements, I just want to reiterate this to you, is students are in cohorts. They take classes together for at least two to four years. You can have a freshman academy design, which I highly recommend because that's one of the most important times in a kid's life, to set that instructional foundation, that S, that social and emotional foundation, and then helping kids to choose something that they're passionate about through intentional strategies, career interest inventories, inventories, personality inventories, et cetera. Then they select a pathway, and they start taking courses in that pathway. You said earlier, you wanted to be a vet until you get, had to watch the animal get the shot. I'm glad you discovered that before you spent a lot of money. Yeah, I'm sure your parents were very happy they didn't spend the money. Same thing. If a kid determines, gets into a healthcare pathway and faints at the sight of blood their sophomore year, let them change their junior year. That's going to be so important. All right? It's teams of teachers from different disciplines, and we elevate one of those teachers as a lead teacher. Again, empowering the teachers to lead a teacher of teacher. So we might be a team. Adam might be our team leader. He runs our common planning meetings. He coordinates like a department head in a high school, but it would be an interdisciplinary team. Students have voice and choice. There are no barriers to get into a program. In an engineering, you cannot say, you have to have a certain math score to get into engineering, because you never know when you're going to ignite the passion or that interest is going to spark in the kid's mind, and it's going to turn on, now I get why I'm learning. So no barriers to get in. All the pathways are open for kids. It's voluntary to enroll in it. But the expectation is that every kid would enroll in something. Opportunity for students to engage in a full range of activities. I don't want you to think that this would say, I majored in music. Okay? I'm a fine arts person. So I understand we want kids to take fine arts. Okay? So they still, you have to build a master schedule that allows kids more choices. Okay? My city went to an eight-period day from a six to an eight because we wanted kids to take more, but one of those was going to be a pathway course. Okay? And that worked for us. It is a college prep curriculum with a career theme. So academic courses meet graduation and college entrance requirements. Whatever your state minimum is for math, English, science, and social studies, I go one above it. Four years of science, four years of English, I'm sure that's required. Four years of science, four years of social study, four years of math. But if I'm in a veterinarian pathway, or I'm in a broadcasting pathway, my sciences might be different, and they should be different. Everybody should not be taking the same thing across the board just because that's what we've always done. So letting the schools build programs, a study that are rich and align with the college major or that field that they're studying is going to be key. The common planning time for teachers, teachers never have enough time to plan, so building an intentional planning time is key, and honoring that time and not taking it away from them. Project-based learning, training all of our teachers, K-12, problem-based learning, whatever you call it, would also be key. And then every student having a plan. I like to say a 10-year plan in the eighth or ninth grade. After taking career interest inventories, experiencing a little bit, where do I see myself in 10 years? Kids in poverty usually live paycheck to paycheck, and they, it's hard for them to set goals and to see where they're going outside of one to two weeks. So if we can help kids with a 10-year plan, if I take these courses in high school, it leads to this post-secondary opportunity into this career right here in Cedar Rapids. That's key. A real written plan. And then the next one is partnerships. You're going to see today a college and career continuum. I don't call it work-based learning, but it's the same thing. To me, it's more than work-based learning, but it's a series of intentional experiences that bring equity to the school. Everybody gets it. You have pockets of greatness going in your schools right now, but can we say 100% of the kids take advantage of FASA, or the scholarship nights, or the college visits, or the career fairs? We can't say that at this point. But if you build an intentional structure, which you're going to see a little bit later, and we say every kid has to do this during the school day, then you're going to see a more intentional structure delivering more intentional results. So internships, mentoring, job shadowing, teacher externships, getting our teachers out there also with these corporations and these companies to design curriculum around what they're learning. I went to school as a music major. Don't ask me to teach engineering, but if you put me out on a teacher externship, I can learn enough where I can develop curriculum along with that engineer to do that. Post-secondary partners working collaboratively with us to bring those post-secondary and technical programs into your high school, working with your community college and your universities, apprenticeship programs, it's, they should be clamoring to get your kids. And then working with our parents and guardians to understand what this looks like and how they engage in it. So it is about the three things. Relationships is key. Raising the rigor is key. And then raising the relevance is key. It has to be authentic, something they can see, touch, and feel in the community and not abstract because they're going to learn at a higher level. So again, a smaller learning community is comprised of a group of students within the larger high school that takes classes together. It's taught by a team of teachers from different disciplines forming relationships. It is a college prep curriculum with a career theme. That could be AP, Advanced Placement, Dual Enrollment, Cambridge International, International Baccalaureate. Those are the four that I see around the world that are delivering the best results, and Cambridge is probably my highest recommendation of all of those. Okay? It is guaranteed college credit anywhere in the world if you pass the exam. So it is a college and career theme bringing rigor together. It's also partnerships with employers bringing relevance. So the goal is to move from acquisition of knowledge to the application of knowledge. That geometry standard I'm learning, if I can apply it in the carpentry class, I'm going to remember it the rest of my life instead of just regurgitating a fact for the test. Okay? So there are 10 national standards. This is my last slide. I'm sorry. There are, I get passionate about this work. There are 10 national standards based on the research of that first group of teachers and academies all over the country. And your, there's a rubric that your district is looking at. There's a freshman academy rubric. There's a middle school rubric, an elementary, and a high school rubric. Right now, we've just looked at high school. We're going to start talking to the middle schools tomorrow. But there, the 10 national standards is there is a defined mission and goal for every single academy aligned with that particular career theme. And these are SMART goals based on these data elements. There is a defined structure within the high school. So you, all the high schools have to do an audit of what they're offering and make sure that it aligns with the themes, and it is intentional. It's not just a hodgepodge of courses. Okay? The district and the high school administration have to be supportive. We have that. Okay? The faculty and staff usually select which academy they want to be part of, if it is an academy school, and they're elevated. There's an assistant principal. There's a counselor assigned to the academies that stay with those kids for three years, an assistant principal that stays with them for three years, and a team of teachers with a teacher leader. Professional development is key around instructional strategies, project-based learning, how to embed the theme of that into the teacher's standards. There's an advisory board, which is governance and leadership. So we've already met with your Economic Alliance and your mayor's office to start those conversations about who could be at the table, what industries, and what we would ask from them. Curriculum instruction, again, this is the heart of everything we do. This would be the entire academic, I forget what you call your department, but Corinne's department, we really focus on high-yield instructional strategies, effective teaming, aligned formative assessments, aligned summative assessments. All that is key. Employer, higher ed, and community involvement is key. Student assessment, looking at these data elements, both formative and summative. We can't do anything about the summative. We got to focus on the formative pieces. What are those leading indicators that are telling us our kids are doing well or not doing well? That leads you into 10, which is the cycle of improvement or sustainability, constantly reflecting and refining what's working, what's not working, and making changes based on that. Okay?
Thank you, Jay. No, you're good. A lot of information. With that, let's take a few minutes, maybe a few seconds. We're going to get you up in a minute to talk to each other. What did you hear that connected to the strategic plan benefits and/or worries that you had from the information that Jay gave us?
I think that, I love a lot of this, but I think this theme of like creating this family within the school and then extending that family to the community and 0% want to stay here. How do we get them connected in a way that they feel valued, they feel important, they feel significant, and they feel heard? And I feel like that will be, that will work wonders. This is sticking with me. The only group not supportive was a high school, teachers and guidance counselors. Maybe that's just because they don't have the familiarity or the, maybe that co-design, co-teaching model really helps solidify things. Is there an indicator of how you move past that initial barrier to ensure that it's successful?
Yeah. So one of the things is, we as adults fear change. Okay? And sometimes we have to see it, touch it, feel it, to understand it. So we are recommending, I'm recommending to the team that we get teachers out in schools that are seeing it. So close by, you've got all the schools in Omaha that are set up in this model in the last three years. And then on the other side of you, you've got Rockford, Illinois, with four high schools in this model. So Adam has been in touch with both of those districts, but there are other key cities, Chattanooga, Nashville, Louisville, Akron, Ohio, Racine, Wisconsin, all right here within driving distance of you to go see it. I think that's key.
We've started some of that work. We've gotten principals to the National Career Academy Conference this year, and as well as seen schools in Nashville. And we're planning more to get a greater audience.
I'd love to join them for those trips. But I'm also just thinking about the stakeholders, the partners. How do you ensure that they, one, you have the expert, right? That they work well with the teacher, that there's trends in different industries and upgrades and, how do you ensure that curriculum across the board is consistent, that the individuals are, you know, sticking with it? How is that all monitored, and whose role is that, I guess?
There's a lot of layers on that question. So let me start broadly. So an advisory board that the district would create would have these industry experts on there, and they would review the programs of study. They would make recommendations to the schools on what are the courses that kids should take in that three-to-four-year pathway. But they also would look at the career and technical education standards that those teachers are teaching. Are they up to date? How do we bring relevance to that? What would we recommend be removed from the curriculum because it's no longer relevant in this industry? Usually in states, CTE, I don't, Tara will have to tell, correct me on this, usually it's every five years that it might be Usually it's every five years that it might be reviewed and updated. In industry, that's not fast enough. So she's agreeing with me. So having those career, those experts on the advisory board, every year looking at the standards the teachers are teaching in those pathways and making sure they're updated with materials, equipment, and co-teaching and co-designing and co-delivering. That's key. There's more, but that's enough.
Yeah, I'm sure. There's a lot in that question.
Is it okay to ask a question regarding this? You know, at our last work session, we talked about this new approach to teaching and rolling this out within our district. We're also talking about another approach here. How do these two things work together?
Well, as you remember, instructional empowerment is invested in teaming with students. This is a perfect fit for teaming. Project-based learning, standards-based grading, all of those things that we talked about with instructional empowerment fit perfectly with this. And I mean, you could speak to that too, but I see no concern with either.
So if you think about instructional empowerment, it is really going to be the actual strategy. So they will be getting there, showing the teachers how to do it, providing the professional learning. With the academy model, it gives us a structure. And Jay can probably speak to this. Oftentimes, you can have the academies, but if we don't train the teachers on how to operate within the academies, then we just have these shiny toys, and we just have these labels on the wall that say "Academy of Medical Sciences", but they never have the processes of knowing how to really carry out the work so that we can get some of the results that we've heard and that we've seen in other places. So they really do go hand in hand.
Are there more than one academy in high schools? Does it, if one school has it, does another school take a different direction? Or does it cross over? Like, could there be two academies in medical sciences?
Absolutely.
Or four, or five?
So the data should tell you that. So if you look at the economic data, you'll see probably your top jobs are going to be anything around IT, engineering, healthcare. You could have that replicated at every single school, maybe with a slightly different focus. Let's say you've got three comprehensive schools. You might have one that's focusing on nursing, one that's focusing on EMS, one that's focusing on medical research and science. Those are three healthcare academies, but a little bit of a different focus. They can have the same focus, that's okay. There could be multiple pathways within one. There could be a nursing pathway, there could be a pharmacy tech pathway, a dentistry pathway. All within an academy of medical services. There could be some that are specialized, maybe an alternative energy pathway that you wouldn't put at every single school. That might be specialized in one. Maybe an advanced manufacturing because there's a more expensive, that would be at one. And then that opens the whole conversation around school choice and choosing what's best for me. It aligns with that also.
So in terms of our process, and we're going to get into that here shortly, we're not going to see school pathways tonight. We'll come back to with those designs at a future meeting. We wanted to lay the groundwork for the potential that we could have, but we're going to get stakeholder feedback. We've got the kids, parents, teachers, administrators. Those are in the works, and we'll get a draft in future meetings.
I just want to maybe chime in here in regards to like what's resonating. And I just want to say that I do believe that we have to consider our facilities, master plan within these conversations. We have a unique opportunity, having the opportunity to go back out for the bond again here in the future. But as we're having these conversations, let's not miss it because as we know, the industry areas that we want to focus on, it should inform how we design our high school. I love the example that you gave of the technology high school. They had the opportunity to be a brand-new high schools there in Omaha. So we have opportunities to either renovate, even when we're thinking about our elementary schools. How are we designing them so that we're creating a K-12 system? And so students are getting hands-on experiences even when they're in elementary schools and moving, matriculating through our high schools. So I just want to make sure that the facilities become part of the conversation as we move forward.
So let's move to how we'll do it. I'm sorry.
I have just a couple of things. One is that I do have some concerns and just wonder, I know that we're teaching transferable skills between focus areas and academies, but we're also looking at creating this family feeling within this cohort. So what happens if a sophomore decides that they don't want to be in medical sciences, that they want to be in advanced manufacturing? Now they're entering a new family. Are they having to, you know, enter a whole new system of supports and MTSS? Or how is that going to work out so that we're able to still support and hold our students in that family way?
Do you want to talk about some of the potential that you've seen?
Sure. So yeah, I think kids should have the opportunity to, depending on how long their pathway is, three or four years, having the opportunity to change at least once or twice. You do want them by their junior year to finish out something so they are a program completer. They're getting some deeper skills and certifications. But there should, as the administrator or the leadership team of the building, there should be some common expectations across around support and interventions, what data we're using and the strategies we're using. So even if I change to a different academy, I'm still going to have the same quality instruction, the same expectations, just through a different theme. But that's going to be key, that the leadership teams of the building are leading and have these common expectations for all teacher teams. It's the same in a middle school. I mean, you have teams within middle schools, so it's going to be the same concept.
Okay. And then my other comment is actually talks about student supports that we're being very intentional about making sure that students have supports to be successful. And then I would just, I'm wondering, what does that mean for student families? Are we going to be able to provide family supports there? You'd mentioned some success in California. California Department of Education has all social services under it, so they know if families can be evicted. They know, the school knows. They can step in and offer supports. We don't have that structure. So I'm wondering, what, if any, supports are we going to be offering to families that will help this be a truly community model?
I think this gives us the opportunity to evaluate the need on a kid level. When you have a group of teachers who know kids well, those needs surface, or more likely to surface. And so having a structure to support the child will ultimately support the families as well. And as Jay said, those structures are what's going to be common. How we support every kid, that'll be something that we now have common and ended by accident that we understand some of those needs where at times it is currently.
Most academy schools will also take a community schools approach to build exactly what you're talking about. Through our common planning time and looking at those data, those kids are surfacing. But then what do we do after that? Just, we're one academy in a school of maybe three or four academies. There should be some type of system built, a student support system above that or a committee that is looking at the community resources. So I think that has to be part of it in order to benefit the kids at the highest level.
And I think we also have, again, I'm so excited about this work and knowing that we have these needs on the front end. So for example, there are high schools that have wellness clinics inside. So as we have kids going through the academies of medical sciences, they have the opportunity to practice, but we can also service families as well. You also have, we have banks in schools, and so financial literacy. So how do we connect our programming that also provides services to our students? Should be part of the conversations as we move forward.
I do have one more comment. I know I said I had only two, but I have one more. And the last one is just about certification and instructional needs. So I don't remember what course it was. At one point, in one of my children going through the school system, there was a difficulty because the teacher needed to have a certain certification within a trade, but also had to have a teaching license. So that was a really hard fit, and I don't think it actually happened because we couldn't find that very special individual. So I'm wondering if there are some certification concerns or if it's something that's truly being collaborative where it is a community partner that's coming in and providing an example. I mean, how, where, when? And I don't want to overload our staff. This is, so for them to divide, design curriculum around that, and with it being something that's changing every five years or sooner, it feels like we're going to ask our staff to be continually refining and learning more and more and more and more.
It would be a great opportunity to have some new hires and new train. Oh, okay. So it seems like to me that this will be an awesome opportunity to have new hires and offer some fresh and new trainings. I'm excited about it as well, which will hopefully open up our opportunity as well to diversify our workforce even more. I see shaking it. Yes.
Let me get just a couple responses to that because in both of your comments. I'll use the teaching pathway. So in my first district in Florida, we put, we had a problem. We were very wealthy. It's one of the wealthiest communities in the state of Florida, and we couldn't attract diversified staff, teacher-wise. So even in Nashville, we put teaching academies in one of our, like 80% Arabic high school, 90% African-American high school, and one high school that was like 95% Hispanic. We put teaching programs in there because we wanted to work with our HR department. When a kid graduated from that academy, they signed an MOU with our HR department. We guarantee you an interview when you get your bachelor's. If you're, in my first district, if we hired you, we brought you in at step five on the pay scale and froze you there for five years. And we made a big deal of it when we hired our first kid back. So we were trying to grow our own. The second example was like a specialty program, like aerospace engineering. None of us are aerospace, I don't think anybody's an aerospace engineer here. We couldn't find one through our regular HR advertisement. So we said, let's get creative with this. So we went to Northrop Grumman and said, will you send an Embry-Riddle aeronautical there in Daytona Beach an hour away? We said, will you send this out to everybody who's ever applied for a job and all your recent retirees? Within a week, I had a woman tapping me on the shoulder at an open house saying, hey, I heard you're looking for an aerospace engineer. I'm interested. I have a degree from Embry-Riddle. We hired her within a week. We went through our CTE office to get her certified, but we couldn't get her certified in the state of Florida, so we certified her through Embry-Riddle because she had already had a PhD. And so we brought in the Embry-Riddle course. So we were creative in how we did that. But it really taught us to look at things a little bit differently and use our resources to get the right people on board than what we traditionally do.
So there's going to be opportunity to continue to ask questions and push, but this is getting to how we'll do it. I do want to thank the team behind me, the innovation team, the school chiefs, the executive cabinet, and the high school principals have all been invited to way too many meetings that they want to come to, but we're working through it. And this is a team effort, and it will be something we've now worked on for 18 months by the time we actually launch in '25, '26. So if you look at the Gantt chart here, we have taken the same approach that Corinne talked about two weeks ago. We've explored, we're going to define, we're all going to learn, and then we'll start to implement. So we talked about the school visits. More will be coming for all stakeholders. The National Career Academy Conference, we got to experience together. Tonight, you're going to see, and you will see it, our new profile of a graduate draft as well as guaranteed student experiences. And that's been the defining phase. And then next year, there might be questions, what's taking so long for some of this to launch? Next year, we're going to learn together because there are big changes. And we want to make sure that staff get the training they need to be able to deliver on the thing when we implement in '25, '26. And then beyond that, we'll sustain in years after. So this year, and Corinne touched on it in her opening, we have been working on these five objectives. And you'll see, like I said, two of the work products that we've been working on tonight. So we wanted to create a design, create a north star of a graduate, and then start to define what are the guaranteed experiences kids will have. So let's get into it. On page, in your binder or your folder, you have a first draft of an information guide, and this is first draft. But we wanted to make sure that this was in front of you. If you turn to page five, you see the profile of a graduate. Draft, yes. Draft, draft. You'll see the profile of a graduate has three core elements now. Equipped for college and career, empowered for life, and engaged in community and civics. These three buckets should capture the measurable outcomes that we want to see from all of our kids that we'll track along the way. So this is our high school profile of a graduate. We're going to do a simple SWOT analysis, and I think you've seen this previously. But I'll give you a few minutes to review. As you look at the profile of a graduate, look at the questions on the board as well and in your slides. I'll give you three minutes, four minutes, to review the indicators. And then I'll ask you to get with a partner and go to one of the chart papers, our easels around the room, and start to work through these questions. Strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats as we consider the next draft of this document. So three minutes independently, and then we'll move. So before we move on, a few, well, two things. One, I should have added, this was developed in conjunction with our task force, the CIAT Committee, teachers, counselors, principals, all have weighed in on this as well. So this is the second or third draft that you're seeing with lots of input beforehand.
And a task force does include community, business leaders, et cetera.
Thank you. Second thing, as you get up to move, please select, or I'd invite you to select another partner to talk to. As you consider the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, think of this as our north star that we're going to be held accountable to. We'll know success, we're successful when? We can come to you and say, look at the data that says 99, 100% of our kids are hitting these thresholds. So it should be clear, and it should be the measures that we want to see and that we find important as a community. With that, find a new partner, find an easel, and we'll come back together in five minutes to hear your thoughts. to hear your thoughts.
All right, come on, baby. I'll miss you.
Sure.
Oh, man. I have to stand.
All right, I will bring the board members back to the table if you want to wrap up.
Ryan, what time do we stop before our picture? All right. I think we're at a time of five minutes. Very good. Yeah. We had to go write things down.
Takes you back to your days as a teacher.
All right.
All right, we'll get started.
Okay, all right, we're looking for some reflections quickly as we kind of wrap up.
We are wrapping up, yep.
Okay.
All right, reflections, thoughts. We're not going to get to the guaranteed experiences, but let's start with the profile. We'll bring it back in a few weeks to move forward. So what did you think? Strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, broad reflections as you saw the, the next draft?
Maybe one thing from each group?
Great.
So we can go with operation include other important life skills. And then, was that the one thing? Okay.
Thank you.
I can't even read what we wrote down on the end. I think some of them we had already touched on, right? We had a lot of talk about teachers and buy-in and all of that, and that that's such a crucial piece, that, that, that has to be in lockstep. Something we, I just asked, but funding, what does that look like, and how do we provide these equitably across all of our schools?
Yep, absolutely. Last group, we're good.
I was just going to say, that's the right question for a board member.
Our group also had some concerns about funding, about certification and license, staff certification and licensing expenses. Who covers that? Is it us? How are we going to pay for it? Is there sustainability? If we're paying for it, is there some kind of agreement that we will pay for you to get this, and now you're going to stay with us for three years? Are you, we're going to pay for you to get it? Are you going to bounce? You know, that, that kind of stuff? Yeah.
And just, as much as that can be a weakness or a threat, it's an opportunity, too. If we're investing in you as potential staff members or current staff members, does that make us an employer of choice and a place that people want to be? I also just think, like, if, I think we're the fir-, we would be the first in Iowa to adapt to this. I know you mentioned Omaha, but...
Sioux City, South Sioux City, but that's in Nebraska.
Oh, well, see? I mean, I think, I think that having an opportunity to control the narrative a little bit on just the whole public schools subject in Iowa, being able to say, like, we are moving forward, we are providing plans and pathways for every student, is, is a huge opportunity as well.
Okay. So we're going to take your feedback, we'll incorporate it, and we're going to bring back the, the continuum at another time. I wanted to end you, or end with a few things. I wanted you to see our timeline. Feedback from these groups has been really important for us, and it will continue to be important for us as we move forward. The task force, which is business leaders, community members, CIAC, which is teachers and parents, have all come together, given us feedback, and we'll bring them back together throughout this year to make sure that we're on track as we plan forward.
I have a quick question about that. How do I say this? In this community, we have a lot of the same people represented across industry, and you go to every other event, it's kind of on repeat. How are we ensuring that we have racial diversity, gender diversity within those experts, so that our children are seeing themselves reflected in the people that are come, you know, the experts that are coming into our classrooms? That is definitely a concern. Extension of that industry, also some limitations, right? Is there any sort of, like, buffet of resources virtually that we can tap into to get key people in certain industries if there is interest from some of our students?
Do you want to talk about the buffet of resources? In terms of getting the right people to the table, that has been an ongoing project.
Like you mentioned, that, you know, we have someone aerospace, or, that's a tough example here, because we might have that, but, you know, fashion, something that is not typically known in Iowa, we might be behind the times, right? How are we getting our students linked up with? So if, of course, we'd love people to stay here, but the people, some of my most formative things were outside of this town, right? So how do we ensure our students are having all of the options available to them?
So I call it your Chamber of Commerce, but it's your Economic Alliance Board. All right, so we have met with them, we're asking them, when it's time, probably this summer, to help us align with those industry folks and to make sure it is diversified in every way that we possibly can, and then create that board that will be advising us from here on out. But that board would be in a minimum of four times a year and give feedback and help us with curriculum and all these experiences, you see. Not happened yet, though.
Okay.
And as we start, it's, in terms of the process, we're not, as Jay said, we're not there yet, but let's surface and start to align around some pathways, and so we can drill in and say, what are the needs? So then we can start making relationship and answering some of those questions as you have them.
I just see this as a unique opportunity to engage people who are not typically asked to engage, that are experts in their field, that are also represented differently than the people we might see on repeat, so.
I love the question. Thank you. Okay, so we're going forward, and some of the challenges that we're going to face, honestly, maybe you surfaced some of them. Staff feedback, they're going to, at the end of this month, they'll start to provide feedback as whole staffs, and our leaders are going to, our principals are going to lead that with district support. School structures, right? These are, this will be a change of behavior for many, and so this will be something that we'll have an ongoing conversation. We're going to spend lots of time developing the capacity to do that well. Facilities, we're going to have to think differently about our facilities, and it will, we'll need to look differently. So where we fund that from, what partnerships we can develop to help us with that will be important. A new course catalog goes back to behavior change. We've been offering similar things for a long time. Developing a new course catalog will require work that we're excited to do, but wanted to flag here. And then finally, the, the curriculum support. That'll be a whole new bucket of work with instructional empowerment that we'll have to do together and in line, and we're excited to do that. With that, I am very grateful.
I just want to point out real quickly, first of all, thank you to the board for starting at 3 o'clock. I do want to also thank our principals for being here in the audience. We didn't have time for engagement with them tonight, but we will not be able to do this work without their leadership, so I'm glad that they were here to be able to hear some of the questions as we continue to engage with them and move the work forward. Thank you.
Thank you all.
I, I want to thank the three of you who are sitting up here, but all of you back behind there that are probably doing a lot of the real work, so I appreciate that.
That's for sure.
So do we have a motion to adjourn the work session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We are adjourned at 5:05. The regular Board of Education meeting will start at 5:30. Thank you.